Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is a little after 1:00. And I'm going to call to order the city of Rancho Mirage's Thursday, September the 15th, 2022. City Council meeting representing the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency in our regular meeting. So we are now in session. And the first bit of business is the flag salute. And Mr. Steve Quintanilla will do it for us.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we're going to do roll call. Chrissy, please.
Councilmember Downs?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kite?
Here.
Mayor Townsend?
I am here. Moving on, next on the agenda is presentations. And we're going to go to the update on Rancho Mirage's High School and the RMHS Athletic Department. And I'm going to be introducing Mr. Chris Calderwood, Athletic Administrator at Palm Springs Unified School District. Hi, Chris.
Hello.
How are you?
Good afternoon. All right, I've got a little prepared thing here.
You go right ahead.
10 years ago, in the fall of 2012, Dr. Wagner began a relationship between this body and Rancho Mirage High School in anticipation of a fall 2013 opening. In February of 2013, I was hired as the first APAD at Rancho Mirage High School. I was employee number three. Over the next 10 years, scary that it's been 10 years, but it's been 10 years. City of Rancho Mirage has been incredibly supportive, been an incredibly supportive partner for RMHS as we emerged as a young, new high school in the Coachella Valley. This body has invited myself, coaches, most importantly, RMH athletes to this room to be recognized for their various accomplishments. You have hosted CIF and league champions, all league and all CIF players and coaches, and many others over this time. You provided generous financial support to many individual sports teams and to Rancho Mirage High School as a whole very easily and efficiently with just a simple email or phone call request. Your support for Rancho Mirage High School and specifically RMHS Athletics is one of the things I looked most proudly upon in my time here. It's been a true delight to work with this body and to bring our kids into this very room to be recognized. When I was hired by Dr. Wagner, I told him at that time that I had 10 years left to give to this endeavor. As you know, Dr. Wagner left several years ago to pursue other opportunities on his career path and is now the Assistant Superintendent in Redlands Unified School District. My time as well has also come to an end. Sorry, I'm an emotional guy. My time has come to an end at Rancho Mirage High School.
Take your time.
And if you cry, we're going to cry too.
Yeah, I'm going to try not to.
So try to control.
Somebody tell a joke.
Okay, good idea.
You're doing great, Chris.
In July, I left Rancho Mirage High School to move over to Palm Springs Unified School District office in order to work with and help all four athletic directors in our district and to make room for Eddie Martinez, the new athletic director and assistant principal at Rancho Mirage High School. Eddie was a teacher in our first group hired to open the school and now comes full circle to take over as athletic director. I will retire from education on January 1st of 2023.
That's okay. You're bringing tears to my eyes.
Just a month short of the 10 years, I promise, Ken.
Think of how lucky they were to have you, somebody who gives it all, who even gets so emotionally involved.
This is my 38th year in public education, and it's time. I wanted to come today to thank you all for the support you've given to Rancho Mirage High School and the support that you've given to me personally. I will always look back on the stretch of my career as the most rewarding time I've spent in education. Sorry. I went into your bathroom.
I have some extra here.
It's all right, Chris, you're doing great.
Much of that is because of the relationships I've had, the good fortune to establish, not least of which to the people in this room. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for your continued support of RMHS and of Eddie. And thank you for a place in your hearts for the kids of Rancho Mirage High School, many of whom may not live in your city, but they all go to your school. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
That's a...
What?
That's the part that I read. All right.
You got through it okay.
So just a little update on this year.
Yeah.
You know, we're a few months in football season. Our football team hasn't quite shown up for football season yet. So we're looking at our fifth game of the year tomorrow and still looking for our first win. But Coach Matthews, who you guys all know and have had in here many times, is working hard with a very, very young squad. And one more non-league game and then a week break. And so two weeks from tomorrow, they start league. And as you know, that's where all the money is. And so could still have a very, very successful season from there on out. Just this week, our... There, not our. Rancho Mirage High School Girls Volleyball Team beat Palm Springs for the first time ever. Last year, the football team beat Palm Springs for the first time ever. Those are both good things, especially since I spent 21 years at Palm Springs before I came over to Rancho Mirage. That's always a good thing. Our, you know, tennis is going, cross country is going, boys' water polo and so forth. So we're moving right along. If you have any questions for either me or for Eddie about what we're doing or what's going on over there, I would be glad to answer any of those or all of them.
Are you staying in the Valley?
I actually live in Beaumont and have for the last 22 years. So yeah, I don't have any plans. My wife's five years behind me, so I'm going to be making dinner for my wife for a while.
So you're not running off to Florida?
No, no, not immediately anyway. No real plans.
Very good. I'm sure we have some questions. But do you want to introduce Ed?
Yeah, Eddie, come on up.
Eddie, why don't you come up and say a few words?
Yeah, again, Eddie was in the first group of teachers that we hired at Rancho Mirage High School. And then he served as our Special Ed Department Chair before he moved over to the district office for two years before he came back as a TOSA teacher on assignment, helping other Special Ed teachers in the district. So now he's back at Rancho Mirage High School, doing a great job. And there you are. All right, say hello.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm honored to be here today. Just like Mr. Calderwood said, I was one of the first teachers hired over at Rancho Mirage High School. I spent 2013 through 2019 there as the Special Ed Lead and moved on to the school district. I was mentoring newer teachers. During that time, I decided to get into administration and get my credential. And I think it just happened to be fate that this position opened up because my heart was always at Rancho Mirage High School. And when I saw the opportunity, I jumped at it. And I'm very fortunate to have Chris on my side mentoring me for these next few months. I know and I realize I have big shoes to fill, but my intent is to keep the tradition that he established and keep that going.
Very good. Well, I know you've got a big legacy before you and behind you, and you're going to do great. And I'm going to ask Richard Kite, who is our aficionado for the sports, to say a few words. Richard?
Eddie, it's really great to see you. I know we'll see you out on the field.
Definitely.
Walking back and forth. Chris, are you still going to hang out there for a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got a pass, so show up now and then.
So they'll let you come back and...
Yeah, I hope so. You know, I don't know, it'd be up to Eddie.
As we were talking earlier before the meeting, there's one sacred jacket that has been worn for a few years, and it's the Letterman Jacket for Rancho Mirage High School. It was the only one at that time. There may be more right now, but none with more heart in them. And we'll miss seeing you out on the green, but I know you'll be there. And don't forget, tomorrow night is Chaffee.
Yep.
At 7:00 at Ontario's.
Yeah, it's in Chaffee, yep.
Still got a chance to finish the top six with a win.
Yeah.
And just say, go Radlers.
There you go.
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know, the very first Athlete or Letterman Jacket at Rancho Mirage High School went to Mr. Kite.
We've seen it many times. I think he sleeps with it.
Well, we were wondering if he realized it was 110 when he was first wearing it, so.
He's very proud of it.
Yeah, he's very proud of it. You're glad to give it to him.
Very good. And next, I'm going to ask our illustrious... What are you, our GM or something like that? Go ahead.
Chris, I just wanted to take the opportunity just to thank you for the partnership that you formed with us over the last 10 years. And, you know, we can see a lot about things in the news, about schools and the education system. But I think that, you know, you're the perfect example of the quality of people that we have in this neighborhood, teaching the next generation. And throughout my entire time of being able to work with you and see you in action, seeing you in your element on the campus, working with the kids was something special. We saw a little glimpse of that passion today in your speech. And I just wanted to thank you for including the city within that experience and making it a partnership that it's become over the last 10 years. We love supporting you guys and what you do. You have a very important job. And I just wanted to thank you for your care and compassion of the next generation over the last 10 years of your career. You've been great to work with, and we're definitely going to miss you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Chris, seeing your speech, I'm thinking of my speech, not too far down the road. And it's a hard thing to do. And I know that came deeply from your heart, your experience, and your love. So that's my take. And the best to you, Eddie, but really, you do one... And he'll still be around. Don't kid yourself. Ted?
I'll have you know that I know, you know, I do a lot of work with CIF. I work with districts and things all around Southern California. And very few schools have a relationship with their city like we do, very few. And when I tell them of the things that you guys do, the things that we're able to do to come bring our athletes to city council meetings, they're just blown away. Athletic directors who've been at a school for 20 years and don't even know who their city people are. So this has been an incredible relationship that we have. And it's just another thing that makes Rancho Mirage special.
Well, because it's a family.
Yep.
And that's the main thing, so. Ted?
Chris, Eddie, I can't thank you enough for your dedication. I know that during the time that I had the privilege of playing principal for the day and spending the day at the high school, seeing the kids come in the gate, being greeted by their first names many times, going to the classes, you can feel the camaraderie, you can feel the dedication, and it is just heartwarming. And that comes from people like yourselves that care, and it's felt. And so we cannot thank you enough. And obviously, Chris, we wish you the best. And Eddie, we know you'll do a great job. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Iris?
Well, I would just echo what everyone else has said. There's not a whole lot more to say except that you're going to be missed terribly. And we hope that you're not going to go away too fast. And because we do...
Too many clothes that are maroon and gray.
Because we do have such a strong relationship. And also, when Ted mentioned about being the principal for the day, it was a joy when I had that experience and to see how the kids interact with the faculty. It was really like family, as Charlie said. It was not their typical high school and not what most of us lived with as we were growing up. So even when you're back in Beaumont or wherever you happen to be, if you're anywhere local, please stop by. And if nothing else, come and enjoy one of your hot dogs on a Friday night.
There you go.
They are the best.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, I heard you say you like cooking. Let me just say that we're available. Anytime.
You have to, you know, talk to my wife first.
Very good. You do that. And last but not least, Mr. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Chris, as you know, I'm so new to city council that you and I haven't had an opportunity to interact over the years. But the speech you gave today tells us all a little about the passion that you brought to the job all these years. So congratulations on your retirement. I know you'll take good care of your wife for the next five years until she joins you in retirement. And Eddie, good luck to you in your new role. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. All right, next on the agenda is the non-agenda public comments. And as we all know, this is the opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. And I'm going to turn this over to Chrissy, our clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the time, if anyone wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda. If you are participating remotely, press star nine or the raise hand button to let us know that you want to speak. I did not receive any speaker cards for this section of the agenda. And it looks like we have one speaker remote that would like to speak. Dorian, are you there?
No, Dorian.
The hand is... Hold on one second.
Okay, the unmute... Hello, the unmute button just popped up just now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, hello, my name is Dorian Whitney, and thank you for hearing my comments this afternoon. Here again to ask for more traffic safety and pedestrian safety. Many cities are giving their streets road diets. And I realize a road diet on the 111 going through our city can be a beautiful way to make it a safer corridor by returning those lanes to landscaping. And everyone can enjoy it more and feel safe. As somebody who travels and visits other cities, it is shocking to me that we still have a whopping three lanes on Highway 111 on each side when it's just unnecessary here and people have died. I honestly believe we will never truly have a need for the third lanes on each side, no matter how big the city grows. Cities as big as Los Angeles has mostly two-lane roads, and the few that are three-lanes, they close off for parking most of the day. But returning our extra lanes back to landscaping or a bus-only lane or anything else really would make it a much safer street for both pedestrians and drivers. Rancho Mirage can show that we care more about the people actually living here, walking here, exercising here, and their safety rather than vehicles passing through us from Palm Desert to Palm Springs. And right now, the conditions of our road say that we care more about the people passing through more than the people living here. This is just wrong. The third lane promotes speeding. Indian Wells has a great example of a two-lane road, and it works just fine. Cathedral City has reduced lanes, Palm Springs, Indio, and Coachella. We are the only ones that have it as three lanes the entire way along with Palm Desert and La Quinta. The third lanes were just made for extra convenience to pass people who are going to speed limit. Please consider a road diet on our section of the 111. I also want to take this extra time to say how bad the situation is for the students of Rancho Mirage who have to take the bus. That bus stop is way too far away, and they have to walk in the middle of the desert in the extreme heat to reach it. I felt so bad for them, seeing them do that during the heat wave. They deserve better, and they deserve the bus stop to be right in front of the school. Please and thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we're going to go to Council Board Member Comments and Reports. And I would like to start off first, if you would let me, and I'm going to do it anyway. So here it goes. I saw this the other day in our report from our wonderful Chamber of Commerce, and I just had to make a comment on it. So I would like to congratulate the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce on reaching 500 active Chamber members with a record of 60 members joining this summer. Katie Spate, her staff, and the Chamber Board have done a fabulous job of helping guide businesses through the pandemic and continuing to keep the momentum going by staying relevant and in touch with the community. And I want to say congratulations to Katie and the entire Rancho Mirage Chamber. And I have been a part of that 20 years. And to see it come to this level is just a wonderful thing. And that's why it's so close to my heart, to see what has been done over at that chamber. I think it's one of the best, one of the biggest that's in the Coachella Valley. I'm prejudiced, but there it is. Also, I was to thank our friends over at the McCallum Theater for a successful 2022-23 season. It's a great honor for the city of Rancho Mirage to support the performing arts at the school and the college. As most of you know, the McCallum Theater is a nonprofit and relies heavily on community support. This looks to be a fantastic lineup, and I am delighted that live entertainment and theater are bouncing back after a rough couple of years that we had without it. So I urge you to check the website at the McCallum so you can see the full lineup of the events that they have through that season. And I hope to see you there. So with that, thank you for the time, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Richard Kite.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good to see you today. Good to be back. Just wanted to let everybody know that the League of California Cities had their annual conference and expo in Long Beach. The conference was attended by almost 400 cities. Rancho Mirage was represented by myself, the Councilmember Weil, City Attorney Steve Quintanilla, and City Manager Isaiah Hagerman. The purpose of the conference was to expand and protect local control for our cities. This year, the focus was on five areas: affordable housing, street and roads, land use, ending poverty in the California cities. And the fifth one was better working with our employees and improving employee relations. Over 2,300 city officials attended the conference over the two days. I was honored to represent the city of Rancho Mirage, and I look forward to next year. We are truly an amazing city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. And next, Mr. Steve, back from his vacation.
I do want to add, Mr. Mayor, my congratulations to Katie Stice and the Chamber for growing to 500 members, 60 of whom, I understand, joined over the summer months. Other than that, I have nothing to report other than I have returned successfully from my vacation. A difficult trip yesterday. I was to have returned last night, but unfortunately, I didn't get home until this morning. So I'm here.
God, how dedicated you are.
Airplane problems.
And here you are. And good health?
All good, thank you.
Very good, Steve. Well, welcome back. Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem Kite has already talked about the League of California Cities meetings that we attended. My perspective of it, and I've been going a number of years, as he has, that he sort of outlined the various topics that were covered, that were all meaningful. From a personal standpoint over the years, I have found that the benefit that I have gotten is the networking and the exchange of ideas with my colleagues from other cities. I believe this is where the benefit comes in. And what it does, it enables you to discuss how you handle various situations in your city as opposed to how situations are handled in other cities. In addition, what do they emphasize and what is most important to them? For example, I might talk to another city person as to what is their unfunded pension liability at this time? Candidly, very few know what it is other than I will get an answer, well, I know it's significant. We'll then talk about various other things as to what percentage of the budget is dedicated to public safety, i.e. law enforcement, fire protection. And again, most of the cities will acknowledge that it's significant, but don't have a percentage. To give you an idea, over the years, most cities, the budget will run anywhere from 50% to 70% of the budget. Certainly worthwhile. So that although the topic of loss or any potential loss of local control, which is critical, was one of the main themes that Richard mentioned. And of course, we have to maintain local control because we really understand our city far better than Sacramento. But again, the benefit for me, and I look forward to going each year because I always learn something, is the exchange of ideas and the networking with my colleagues. I also want to thank our erstwhile attorney, Steve Quintanilla, who hosted a dinner while we were there. Again, Steve, thank you. It gave us an opportunity to get to know the people on Steve's staff, the attorneys that work for him. Sadly, during the last year, we only have an opportunity to meet them generally on Zoom. Here, we had the pleasure of spending several hours together and getting to understand them and understand how pleased they are working with the city. So again, it was very worthwhile. I appreciate the opportunity. And I will tell you this. By way of comparison, and this is a little bit of braggadocio, by comparison, the city of Rancho Mirage continues to do extremely well by comparison to many of the other cities. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Iris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And although I was unable to attend the League of Cities event this year, I appreciate the updates on them, and I know it's a worthwhile event for all of us to attend. I was very fortunate this morning. I was on a three-hour conference Zoom meeting also discussing with a number of people in a number of other states how they are running their states and the successes they've had and the failures that they've had and the suggestions that everyone was able to make to make everyone's life more beneficial. And it was a phenomenal meeting. Unfortunately, I ended up leaving my glasses on my desk. So you'll have to forgive me this morning or this afternoon if I occasionally put on my trifogals. But these are my sunglasses that I always carry with me. And as I say, forgive me for using them on occasion. But I'm at that age where trifogals are necessary. So I'm just glad I have them. So thank you again, and I wish everyone all the best.
You look good with the mask, Iris.
Well, thank you.
I can just tell you that.
Thank you.
Nothing to worry about. Thank you, dear. And now our illustrious City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items today. The first one is I would like to wish Dana Hobart a very happy birthday. Today is his birthday. And Dana, I hope that you are enjoying your day. And today, I'm reflecting on your many contributions that you had for this city. And as a staff member that got to work with you, we could always count on you reading every word in a staff report and always asking very good questions that pushed us to analyze every ask... every aspect of what you were voting on. So Dana, I hope you're having a great day. Happy birthday.
Amen.
The next item is last weekend, on Friday, actually, when we had the storm pass through, we, late in the evening on Friday, we had a leak in the roof at the library, and it was in our server room. And I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the staff that quickly responded to that to protect all of our IT infrastructure that was in that room. Although we did have a little bit of water damage to walls and things like that, we were able to save the thousands upon thousands of dollars of IT infrastructure in that room thanks to the quick action by our city staff late into the evening. So thank you to our city staff who continue to do an excellent job for our city. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is our consent calendar, and I'm going to turn this over to the city manager, present consent calendar items, and handle public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, you have five items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to approve the September 15, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Sorry, that should be the first.
Sounds like that's today. So let me correct that. Oops. The agenda is mismarked. So that is an error. That is meant to be September 1 meeting minutes. So we will notate that. Item number two is to adopt Joint Resolution Number 2022, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the City Council and affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brownac bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number three is to approve the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority 2021 Power Content Label. This is a standard item that we do annually that shows the power mix purchases within each of the plans offered by the Energy Authority. Item number four is to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the land lease agreement to ensure continued operation of wireless communication tower located at the city's fire station on Highway 111. The council will recall that a representative of Verizon reached out and wanted to renegotiate the lease for the cell phone tower at that site and lower the payment. The council established a subcommittee. That subcommittee met and negotiated the lease terms that are before you today. Item number five is approval of the demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of the five consent calendar items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Kristi?
I do not have any speaker cards, and I'll give a second to see if anyone remote wants to speak. And no one is raising their hand.
Isaiah, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
I noticed here where we have an item dealing with RMEA, has there been any recent communication between staff and residents regarding RMEA?
So very few customer calls come in. You know, in the beginning of the program, when we launched the program, there was definitely more interest. But now it's kind of doing its job, right? It's a behind-the-scenes function. We procure the energy on the back end. From a customer interfacing standpoint, Southern California Edison's still the utility. They bill, they collect your money. So we don't have too many customers calling in. Occasionally, it will happen. Most of the time, you know, if somebody's new to the community or they have a question on their bill, they'll go ahead and call us. I would say, you know, probably the biggest issue that we face along with, it's not unique to our community because we have an Energy Authority, but Edison's, Southern California Edison, has been upgrading their billing system. And so periodically, we'll run into a customer in our community that stops receiving bills for months on end from Southern California Edison. And so we're just another avenue where our resident can come, and we try to advocate for them with our contacts at Southern California Edison. So those are kind of the primary issues that come up. But this power content label that's being approved today will be mailed to every customer. And when somebody is new to Rancho Mirage and they move in, they do get the standard notices that we sent at the beginning of the program. So for any new customer that's moving into the city that establishes a new account, they get all the notification that we used in the implementation of the program.
When would you anticipate the mailing going out to the residents?
I'll have Jessica Pulliam answer that question.
Hi. Good afternoon, council. Councilmember Kite, the mailing will go out before October 1st is required to, so it'll be going out here in the next week or so. And then in addition to the standard when a new person moves in, if anyone completes a solar project and they apply for the solar rebate, additionally, we send them other items that they can do to reduce their energy usage, as well as informing them about our 100% premium, our 100% renewable option. And in addition to that, we have recently advocated with a demand-response through OM Connect. And so we have had some eBlast go out on that to our residents, letting them know that if they wanted to opt to go into this program, they would apply through OM Connect, they would get a smart thermostat or two smart plugins. And then in response to that, whenever there is a peak critical item with SCE or through us where energy demand is really high and they lower their thermostat, they can earn points that can be redeemed for gift cards or other items.
Thank you. Yeah, the solar rebate program is still very popular and is unique to our Energy Authority. So if anyone in the city is thinking about doing solar or expanding a current solar system, they're eligible for that $500 rebate.
Very good. Any more council comments?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Isaiah, I believe that Verizon, in their request to us, I think they asked for two things. One was a reduction in the rent, and two, I believe they asked for the ability to make modifications to the property. What did we tell them about modifications to the property?
Yeah, so we just told them on the front end, that's not something that we're going to accept. And so I think their main motivation was probably the financing side of it, to save them some money so that when they're evaluating if they're going to let go of towers, it wouldn't be one of ours. So they didn't fight too hard on the modifications to the tower.
Okay, so the adjustment to the lease is limited to the numbers as opposed to other issues?
Yep. And so we still have all the control over the look and height and all those things that we had before over that cell phone tower.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then I will call for a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a yes and a second. And if it comes up on the screen, we can vote. There it is. Please vote.
I don't have it on my screen.
We're having a technical issue. Hold on one second. I can go ahead and do a voice, a roll call vote.
Why'd you do that?
Okay. Councilmember Downs?
Steve?
Councilmember Downs?
I still can't vote.
We're going to do a verbal voting by?
I'm sorry.
By us's.
Welcome back, by the way.
The server must have gotten wet.
It drifted from the library.
Councilmember Smott Rich?
Yes.
Councilmember Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kite?
Yes.
Mayor Townsend?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We got through it. Next on the agenda is reports and information items. And introducing this will be Jessica Pullman, Senior Management Analyst. Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask IT to go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint, please.
We're having issues.
So today, what I'm going to be updating council on is the BRTAC on solid waste recycling and organics. As soon as they get the PowerPoint up, I do want you guys to see the visuals on that. But I am excited to get this update because we are well underway now.
We're having a technical difficulty.
I think the rain, Isaiah, wasn't as quite as successful as we thought.
Yeah, apparently it leaked in this building, too.
The vote screen just flashed.
Yeah. You can vote now.
We're getting there.
There we go. Perfect. Okay, so the new carts are going to start being delivered the first week of November. This is a phased rollout, and we do anticipate all households in Rancho Mirage to have their new three cart system before the end of the year. A new calendar function is going to be up on the city website within the next two weeks. It is very simple and easy to use. You just type in your address there, and it will let you know when you're getting your new three carts, as well as your regular pickup services day. Once this calendar function is up and embedded on the city website, we will send out a eBlast. So for any residents that are not subscribed to receive those newsletters, I definitely recommend that they go on the city website, click in the upper right-hand corner, and subscribe to get the city's newsletters. Very soon in the mail, all households are going to receive a letter from BRTAC with detailed transition information. Within this letter, there will also be "Take Me" stickers. These stickers are to be used on your old bins if you wish for BRTAC to remove and recycle these on your behalf. If you'd like to opt to keep your old bins, you absolutely can do so, but you can no longer store them with your curbside service carts. They will need to be stored elsewhere, and they can no longer be put out for BRTAC to pick up. And then, starting in mid-October, if you need additional "Take Me" stickers, or if you miss that letter, you are always more than welcome to come into City Hall and pick up additional stickers. Once households receive their new carts, they are to immediately begin using them. They are active, and you will be ready to go right away. Your current gray recycling cart will get new markings, an updated lid, and it will be converted to your trash cart. Additionally, you will get a new blue recycling cart and a green organics cart. In addition, you can see that little pail in between the organics and trash cart, and that is a kitchen pail that is provided to all residents complimentary to assist in food scraps or anything of that nature so that they're not having to constantly walk out to the organics. We do have tips and tricks on the website to reduce smells and odors and things like that. You can always freeze your food scraps. You can put some baking soda inside the container. There's a lot of different things you can do just to make sure that you maintain, you know, good smells in your home and things like that. But everyone is required to participate in organics. And so we do really encourage everyone to look inside their pail and to learn more about how to use it. And moving on to that, the kitchen pail, I've already gone ahead and let you know a little bit inside, but I do want to encourage that when you get your new carts, that you open up this kitchen pail that's provided, as it will have detailed information about what you're going to put into each cart, how to use your kitchen pail. It'll also give you details on, again, tips and tricks on that pail. We'll also be providing complimentary liners for inside that pail because you will be bagging your food scraps. Anything coming from your yard, like trimmings or leaves or anything like that, you can just put directly into the organics bin. But food scraps, we are encouraging bagging just to, because we live in the desert, it gets really hot out here, and to just put food scraps in is just not ideal. In addition, BRTAC is going to be picking 400 households at random to receive a $10 gift card to a Rancho Mirage business. So look inside your kitchen pails. You may be a winner. Another thing that the City of Rancho Mirage will be doing is a mystery basket through the Rancho Mirage Recycling Right Sweepstakes. Starting November 1, all Rancho Mirage households are eligible to enter this sweepstakes for a chance to win the recycling All-Star Basket valued at $200. You just simply take and share a picture of your new organics kitchen pail in action, submit your name, service address, and phone number by 11:59 PM on December 31, 2022 to be entered for a chance to win. Details and the entry form, again, are located inside that kitchen pail. So I really encourage all residents to open and look inside. In addition, I will have forms here at City Hall. You can email recycling@ranchoorageca.gov, and we will have all the details, as well as the rules, posted on the city website. Once you get your new carts, there are still going to be questions about what goes where. Again, lots of details inside that kitchen pail, but if you miss it, or if you just want to learn more now, we do have it up on the city website. We have an informational video up there. In essence, your blue cart is for your recyclables. Do not bag them. Please clean them. Any cardboard and newspaper should be flattened. This is where your cans, bottles, glass, tin, and aluminum will go. For your green cart, anything that grows goes. So all of your food scraps and waste, cooked meat, yard trimmings will go in there. Again, please bag your food scraps. For your gray cart, this is now going to be just simply your trash. And so any sort of Saran Wrap is not recyclable. I know it's made of plastic, but you cannot recycle it. So please put it in your gray trash cart, Styrofoam, any sort of bathroom waste, pet litter, all goes in the gray cart. If you have any textiles such as blankets, clothing, or shoes, if they are still usable and donateable, we definitely encourage donating. If they are not, they would go in your gray cart. And again, just a reminder that chemicals, paint, sharps, medications, electronic waste, and batteries do not belong in any of your carts. You may call BRTAC. And bulky items, as well as these items, are eligible for most residents for free household pickup. We also have battery recycling available here in the center area of City Hall right when you walk in, in addition to medications as well. Can be recycled here, but you can always call BRTAC for pickup. And that completes my presentation and update on BRTAC.
Very good, Jess. I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Need just to say. First, if we don't do it correctly, will they just leave the container, or will they put a note on it? You know, get your act together. You don't know what you're doing, or you're not reading, being funny. And the second thing is, my beloved old trash barrels, if I keep them, you guys can't pick them up, or they won't pick them up, right?
So just to clarify, you want to keep your old trash barrels?
No, if I just want to keep them as a backup. The backup, people will think, well, I'll keep this as a backup and put them out. But you already said at the beginning, the answer is no.
No.
So they're nonusable.
They're not usable in your curbside service anymore. But if you want to use them in other applications, like, let's say, your gardener wants to be able to use them in the backyard, and then you're going to transfer it into your, that is fine, but you can't leave them for BRTAC to pick up anymore.
Very good.
But if you can purpose them elsewhere as you can. And then in regards to your question on contamination, is what we call that, if there is contamination, BRTAC will be doing significant outreach and trying to educate the residents on that, the ones that they see are having issues. At some point in time, we will have to begin to do notice of violations. There will be no fees involved in that at first because we will be pushing heavily on education.
Very good. And in the nine cities, who is rolling out first? Is there somebody picked, like Rancho Mirage, or Palm Springs, or how are they doing this?
So some of the other cities have already begun their rollout. Palm Desert started at the beginning of July, and so they do still, not all of the city there has been done. I know some of theirs will be done this fall as well. So it depends on each city. Some have already kind of started, but we are still more so at the forefront than most.
Very good. Isaiah?
Yeah, you know, obviously, every city in California has to do this, and it is state law. And, you know, we have, BRTAC is a great company. They do a great job for our community. Anytime you implement something new on this scale, there's going to be people that maybe missed the educational materials that were mailed to them or are just finding out about it when they get these new bins. So much like BRTAC does now, everybody involved understands there's definitely going to be an education period when these bins roll out. No matter how hard we try, there's going to be somebody who missed our communication and missed our material on what's going on. But BRTAC does a great job. Obviously, if they call here at City Hall, we have a website full of information for them. They can get ahold of Jessica. We're ready to help our community with this transition, not through heavy-handedness, but just education and customer service.
Very good. And home phones, Jess and Isaiah, right? And home phones, Jess, and Isaiah, right?
I was going to give your cellphone number in there.
You could do that. I won't have the answers, because I want to keep my old gray barrels.
Yeah, you can keep what you want. They just won't pick them up anymore.
Any other comments, anybody?
Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Jessica. In working through the process, I'm sure you ran across the question that people live at the Springs, all have containers built into their garages, and the containers will only hold two containers. So we're asking them to do a third container, which means that one of those containers is going to stick outside on the walk or some other way. Have you looked into that?
Yes, so BRTAC has identified a few neighborhoods that have unique situations like that, and so we are actively problem-solving that. And if it's necessary to come up with some sort of unique bin or things like that, we will do that.
And to clarify, it's the state telling them that they have to use three bins.
That is true.
Say that again?
I said it's the state telling them that they have to use three bins.
Well, okay. And we tell the state that there may be a good alternative.
Good luck. I think you learned at that California League of Cities Conference.
There you, there you go.
The truth behind that one. Now, we, BRTAC obviously is out there every day, so the Springs was identified as, hey, that's one of the communities that's going to be harder to implement because of those already pre-made storage areas that are really built for two trashcans. At the end of the day, you know, the state is requiring by law that we add organic recycling into the mix. Now, what an individual customer chooses to do, you know, they may think, some people may choose that the organics bin may be the easiest to store in another place. That's up to the customer. So BRTAC does a great job. I know they started reaching out with the Springs just to inform them, hey, this is coming, and these are going to be some of the issues we have. One of the questions earlier was on contamination, and I know Jessica listed off the stuff that should not go in our trash. You know, most of the time, when you hear of a trash truck catching on fire, it's because somebody put usually a battery or something along those lines that does not belong in the trash trucks. So BRTAC does a great job. If you have old paints or things like that in your garage that you've been keeping forever, and you want to get rid of them, that's a free service for residents, so they can just call BRTAC, they can schedule a pickup, they can let them know what the items are. We obviously do our events, our shred events, our e-waste events, so we try to make it easy for our residents to sort trash differently than maybe we used to.
It may be worthwhile for BRTAC to have a meeting with the residents of Springs in a larger group and let everybody address those issues.
So Councilmember Kai, on that, you, it has been identified, and BRTAC is working directly with the different HOAs, and so any sort of group gathering with the residents and things like that will be coordinated through the different HOAs. But something will be occurring specifically at the Springs.
Okay, good. Very good. You know, speaking of the Springs and Morningside, you guys have that little closet by the, by the garage. Now, are these going to fit into that garage?
No.
What's going to happen? They're going to be out. Do you realize Springs and Morningside are going to have these containers out in public?
Yeah.
Really? Oops.
Well, BRTAC is going to work with each one of those HOAs directly, and they have let me know that if it is necessary to keep some sort of crate system or things like that, where they can have smaller bins fit in there, and they don't get the, the 32-gallon size, the ones that we've been seeing, that they will work with those, those communities to make sure that they can meet the compliance necessary for this mandate while maintaining aesthetics and, and things of that nature at the homes.
Yeah.
I mean, practically, customers are going to make a decision, right? Their use right now to having their trash and recycle in those bins, or in those cabinets.
In the cabinets.
So I would guess that will continue to be their practice, and when they get this new organics bin, they will find some other place to put it that works for that customer.
I, I hope so. I'm going to be a little snot and say, those bins are right by the front doors of these homes, too. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, made my point. Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have, actually, two comments, and perhaps Jessica can confirm and clarify, because when the BRTAC people were here, I had asked them specifically about styrofoam. And they said that, yes, we all know that all those styrofoam containers, you know, usually have that little triangle on the bottom, and it's misleading sometimes, because people think they are recyclable, when in actuality, they apparently are not. The only styrofoam they seem to feel that is recyclable is the great big large styrofoam pieces that are used in packaging, and apparently in some kind of home construction also. So maybe you could clarify that, too.
So the, the styrofoam that you get inside shipping-type of containers, when they say those are recyclable, they mean they're reusable, so you can keep them, store them, and use them again, but they are not something that can go in the recycling bin. All styrofoam would need to go into the trash or the gray-colored bin.
Okay, great. Okay, and it was mentioned about paint, and it was interesting, because we just recently saw a documentary on how paint is recycled, and they've got these enormous plants who put together all the paints they collect, and they devise certain colors that are used very often in covering graffiti and covering large areas. And they're all numbered. You can, different corporations can order the numbers they want as far as the color scheme, and all these paints are reused. They take off the skin, they grind up the hard pieces that have already dried over the years, and they are also used. So if you're at all concerned about your paint not being recyclable, just keep in mind that there are companies out there that do recycle paints, and please contact the appropriate people to have your paints picked up. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Chrissy, we're going to go off schedule a little here and call for public comments, if we have any, or anybody wants to call in.
Okay. Okay, so if anyone participating remotely would like to comment on this item, please press star nine or raise hand. I don't have any speaker cards, but there is one speaker, Dorian. I think you're still muted. Are you there?
Okay, hello. Yes, I think there's a button you have to press on your end for, to unmute me, but it finally popped up. So excuse me for that, but yeah, I just wanted to say, I am thankful that this is finally happening. This is long overdue. So I think, you know, there should not, not be many excuses for people not to know how to, you know, recycle and stuff like that. We should know what's bad for the environment and stuff like that. And I thought it might have something to do, so I would also like to ask council to please ban plastic bags, the sale of them at grocery stores, and switch to paper bags, because people should be reusing their plastic bags by now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That was the last speaker.
Very good. With that, we're going to move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, I just wanted to take a minute and thank Jessica for her work on this. When it comes to the organic pail that will be in the kitchens, Jessica and BRTAC worked together to come up with a creative solution to encourage people to open those pails by incentivizing them with gift cards. So Jessica, I just wanted to thank you for your creativity in trying to help reach people and get them to look at the material.
Very good. And along with that, I'm sure that it's not over for Jessica yet, at all. The next item is going to be the turf rebate program update, and I want to say that last city council meeting, we highlighted Kofi, and we just want to say, we're not slighting you, but we're giving this to her to do so. Don't take, don't take it personally. Just a little joke.
Is that true?
Couldn't help it, couldn't help it. I told him this yesterday. I was going to do that. Okay, Jess, introducing Jessica, Senior Management Analysis, the rebate program update.
Thank you. So I just wanted to come to council today and let them know that the Ranch and Mirage turf rebate program is going fantastic. To date, the program has resulted in well over 700,000 square feet of living turf removal and the conversion to more drought-tolerant landscaping. And just to give a visual to how much this really is, it's, it's the equivalent of over 12 football fields. Quite significant. Council has allocated $2 million to this program, and at its completion, we expect well over $1 million a square, a million square feet of turf removal. There are still approximately $440,000 in city matching funds available to be claimed at the current matching of $3 per square foot, on the rebate for residential, and $1 per square foot for all HOA commercial projects. In addition to this rebate, the HOA commercial projects that are required to use a landscape architect may be eligible for reimbursement of these costs from the city at up to additional $6,000. Applying is really simple. The application is all handled through CVWD, and at the completion of an approved project, CVWD will provide one rebate check for the full amount. Anyone that is considering converting their turf are encouraged to put in an application with CVWD. And that concludes my update.
Very good. Appreciate that. And Chrissy, we're going to add public comments also to this.
Okay, if anyone would like to speak on this item, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards, and no one participating remotely would like to speak.
Very good. How about council comments? Anybody have anything to say on this one?
Comment, Charlie?
Yes, Richard.
Jessica, what were the figures again on the total dollars that have been spent and the acreage that we've covered?
So to date, we've spent just a little bit over $1.5 million, and currently, we're at over 700,000 square feet of living turf removal.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
I do have one question. So Jessica, roughly, how much longer do you expect it might take to run through the last $500,000 that we've allocated to this program, based on the run rate at the moment?
Based on the current running rate, I would say this program will be completed in the next month or two.
Got it. Thank you.
When was that?
Next month or two.
Okay.
Very good. Any other comments?
I would just encourage people to not just think about doing this, but make the effort, because it is so easy, and it's so easy to fill out the forms, it's so easy to take a few pictures, and they make it as easy as possible, and you, you couldn't do more for our environment, and because the city has chimed in on this, we show how important it is for us, and we're the example of how we're willing to put ourselves out there, our finances, and we hope that you will make the effort to make sure it happens in your neighborhood and in your batten backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. And with that, if there's no more discussion, we will close the reports and information files, and we will move on to the action calendar, and it is Resolution Number 2022, similarity vacation, approximately a certain amount of square feet on a right-of-way, and I'm going to turn this over to Ryan Sandell, Public Works Director, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're waiting for presentation to come up, I'll say good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you this afternoon is a staff recommendation to vacate a portion of unused and unnecessary right-of-way and replace with an access easement that is in conformance with the Section 19 specific plan. So bear with me through a few slides as I give you a brief presentation of where we're located in the city. This property we're going to be discussing is south of Interstate 10 Freeway and Ramon Road, along Bob Hope Drive, and just north of Dyna Shore. And the reason why we're discussing this, it was brought up by the property owner that owns approximately 115 acres in the oval area that I just displayed. So the alignment of, what is Bob Hope now? Before city incorporation in 1973, actually showed as straight across as the yellow dash line aligning with Rio del Sol on the north side of the freeway. If anybody's familiar with the Coachella Valley Animal Campus, that is Rio del Sol. The story, as I've been told, is as the tribe developed its development plans in the 80s for what is now Agua, the alignment of Bob Hope that exists today came to fruition. So prior to incorporation, the dash line indicates what was to be achieved, and the agency, which I would believe would be at the county at the time, had acquired some right-of-way, as shown with the animation that just flew in. And as you can see, somewhat bifurcates the property that we're discussing. So the action before you this afternoon is fairly simple. We're requesting, by resolution, that the city council summarily vacate the area shown in yellow and replace by accepting an access easement as shown on this screen. And why would we do that? I've laid over the Section 19 specific plan, and this is to get us closer to what the approved plans and documents of the city are intending. So with that, staff would be happy to answer any questions. This will allow the property owner to kind of clean up their parcel, subdivide, and prepare to place on the market for sale. With that, that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. This has been long, long in coming, I believe, right? Very good. I'm going to turn this over to the public comments, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, now's the time. If you're participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom, and our first speaker is Philip Bettencourt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Philip Bettencourt. I'm here as, as an emissary for the law firm that filed the application that settled some three years of litigation and mediation to try and divide this property among 11 tenants in common and their heirs. In any event, that division took place. It took place along good and wholesome lines, which your staff was helpful in identifying, to make a more workable plan for each group of property owners and maintenance with the specific plan opportunities. It will give an opportunity now for those two groups of property owners to go their separate ways, with their differences settled, if you will, and it protects the access to Bob Hope. So I want to especially thank your Public Works Director and City Engineer for their help, and our colleagues at MSA for helping us get to this point, if you will.
Very good, and thank you for all your input and, and all the work that you've done to make this come about.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
Very good. And then with that, I'm going to turn it over to council comments. Anybody have any comments? All right. Next, we will call for a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, summarily vacating approximately 56,656 square feet of excess right-of-way on the former Rio del Sol Road east of Bob Hope Drive in Sections 19 and 24 and 2, authorize approval of dedication of a 30-foot-wide replacement street right-of-way running east and west in Sections 19 and 24 to maintain legal access to vacant properties. This action is subject to final review and approval of the city engineer and city attorney, and must remain consistent with all provisions of the Section 19 specific plan on file with the Development Services Department.
Thank you, Ted. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. Thank you, Iris. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to number nine is Resolution Number, next in order, designate the City of Ranch and Mirage as an enforcement agency, and I'm going to turn this over to Jessica again. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item now presented for council's consideration is the designation of the City of Ranch and Mirage as the enforcement agency for the enforcement of state regulations on single-use foodware accessory standard for the enforcement of state regulations on single-use foodware accessory standard condiments, also known as AB 1276, within the city's boundaries. This legislation is from the state. It's already in effect. And today, council is not considering whether it is applicable within the city as it is already mandated by the state. What the city council is considering is the enforcement agency to enforce these already established requirements. So a little background on the bill itself, it went into effect January 1st of this year. And it prohibits food facilities from providing any single-use foodware accessory or standard condiments to a consumer unless specifically requested by that consumer. Additionally, it prohibits those type of items from being bundled or packaged in a way that prohibits the customer from taking only the desired item. There are provisions for drive-throughs, which provide, for an example, the ability to automatically provide what is reasonably necessary to eat what was ordered, as well as exclusions for healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, public and private school cafeterias. The aim of this bill is to reduce the number of single-use foodware items and plastics and condiments in the waste stream. To provide a good example, if a customer ordered soup, typically all that is necessary to consume this meal would be a spoon. If the customers provided bundle plastic foodware and condiments, likely the knife, fork, ketchup, and mustard would just be thrown in the trash. This bill prohibits that kind of bundling. However, if the customer desired a knife to consume their soup, they may be provided one, but they must ask for it. The key point here is that the customer must ask for out-of-ordinary plastic items or condiments. The bill specifies that the first and second violations will result in a notice of violation and that any subsequent violation is an infraction punishable by a fine of $25 for each day in violation. But this is not to exceed an annual total of $300. Staff recommends that council authorize the city to serve as the enforcement agency as the city would be most effective in fulfilling this enforcement itself and will be able to focus efforts on education, being proactive, providing resources to our businesses to help ensure compliance. In contrast, setting the enforcement agency elsewhere may result in less of an education-focused approach and the inability to quickly respond to issues. Staff has already developed a robust AB 1276 webpage on the city website under Business Recycling, which has downloadable signage for our businesses. Additionally, staff is prepared to work through the Ranch Mirage Chamber of Commerce to distribute educational materials regarding this bill to all Ranch Mirage businesses that to ensure that they are informed of the new legislation and aware of best practices on this and to become compliant. If council proceeds to authorize the city to be the enforcement agency, staff is prepared to move forward in an education-based focused manner. This concludes my presentation. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to address those.
Yes, I have a couple. One is the Plastic Squad. Now, are we having, after hours, we can put together a little group that go out and go to all the restaurants and say, you're not using your plastic? Or you gave me a spoon and not a knife and a fork, and I'm going to let our city.
That is not consent.
The point of this is there are very passionate people in the community that care about this. And so if we're not designated as the enforcement agency, then somebody else would be. And so you do have people going out and testing restaurants to see if they're complying with this law. So what this resolution would do is it would put the city in the position to be able to communicate with our businesses. And we feel like we're the most appropriate agency to be able to do that due to the relationship at the local level. So as Jessica mentioned, there's a few steps that we take before we're required to issue citations. The citations can't exceed $300 in a year. So.
Very good. In our conversation, Jess, that we had yesterday, it seems that if, correct me, when you go in and you ask for the soup, they have to ask you if you want the spoon. Is that kind of where it is?
No. So if you're in the restaurant, they can provide you with a spoon because that's reasonable. But they shouldn't provide you with a knife unless you request one. And this is in regards to plastic ware. So if you're in a restaurant, they will probably still provide you full silverware.
Very good. How about straws? What happens with them?
We already have a ban on plastic straws. So any straw you receive should be made of some sort of paper or bamboo or recycled material.
Good, good. Very good. Any questions before we go to council?
Just one question. As far as notification of these different restaurants in our city, how is that going to be done as far as the education and rules and regulations that will be implemented?
So we'll go ahead and work through the Chamber of Commerce to reach out to all of the business community. And with during this pandemic, one of the things that came out of it was we do have very good, strong, established relationships with our business community. We have email addresses. We know main points of contact. And so we'll be reaching out to them that way. And most restaurants are already aware of this legislation. It's not coming from the city. So it wasn't something where we were required to educate, but we're going to be doing it proactively. Really, this is just putting who's going to enforce the state's regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments on this?
I guess I'm just a little confused. So the Assembly Bill requires that cities enforce this regulation. Is that correct?
The Assembly Bill requires that cities designate who will enforce this regulation.
Okay. And so who are we, who are we designating to enforce this? I'm confused about that.
Staff is recommending that we designate ourselves.
Who was that again?
The city. We're recommending that the city be the enforcement agency. As opposed to some county agency or some state.
I understand. So we could ask someone else to do it in our stead, as you say, like.
Yeah, but again, you know, staff feels like because of the relationship at the local level, because this is more of an education issue than maybe a citation issue versus other agencies that are larger might view it as just a citation issue. So we want to be able to be in the position, staff wants to be in the position to be able to work with our businesses, to be able to work with the chamber, to educate instead of just, you know, if we default to somebody else, we're going to be subject to their process, to their rules, or our businesses would be subject to that and a much more probably difficult agency to get a hold of. So if a restaurant owner had a question, instead of calling here and getting Jessica or going to the chamber and Katie coming over and, you know, asking us questions, they're going to be left dealing with somebody else. So it's really a matter of just putting the city in the driver's seat of being able to be in the position to interact with our businesses.
Okay, I think I understand. So the, and the, the approach that we choose to take is as an educational organization as opposed to a punitive organization in enacting this or in following the Assembly Bill?
Yeah. So, you know, obviously the bill has certain provisions in it that we would follow, but we would seek to be educational based.
Okay. One more question.
Sure.
As long as, just as an understanding, if reports come into us that there is abuses that are going on from different restaurants, is it going to be our job to perhaps issue citations? If or if we need to have punitive measures taken, would that be done by our code enforcement people?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
But that would be after multiple times of educating them. And it would be a willful neglect of state law at that point. And so if you have a business that gets there, they get a citation and they've been told repeatedly, that then becomes on them and not on us.
Okay. So that's a short, sweet answer. And now we all know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now we're going to have a Plastic Mod Squad.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, really what this does is it's going to change the consumer habit where maybe we all got used to just automatically having, you know, those bundled silverware that come with the fork, the spoon and the knife and the salt and pepper and the napkin and whatever else. They can no longer do those bundles. So more in the consumer habit is they need to request items. And then they'll be given just that specific item that they request. Obviously, they still have forks, spoons, knives that are plastic. It's just you'll have to request those items.
That really breaks it down, Isaiah, to a good answer for the whole issue. So very good. With that, I'm going to give it to Chrissy. I've done it backwards, but let's do the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on this item, now's the time to do so. Press star nine or raise hand if you're participating remotely. I have no speaker cards and no one participating remotely would like to speak.
So we're good to go, right? So with that, we will call for a motion. And I will make that motion that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, designating the City of Ranch Mirage as the enforcement agency for state regulations on single-use foodware accessories and standard condiments.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Very good. We're getting through this in a hurry. Okay, next is number nine. Number 10. And number 10 is consider agreement with the Coachella Valley Symphony for free performances for residents and guests at the Ranch Mirage Amphitheater in the amount not to exceed $50,000. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gabe Codding, our marketing director. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. Yeah. So today I'm here to, to present an opportunity that presented itself. So just as a little context, back in 2021, as you can imagine throughout the pandemic, a city that owns an amphitheater fields many, many requests for outdoor programming. So we, we got to talk to almost every organization in the valley looking to do something outside when their indoor venue was shuttered. So one of those that we came into contact with was the Coachella Valley Symphony. And they asked, they had a program. They hadn't been able to do programming for a while. They did a Halloween program, which was kind of unique where they had all of their members dressed in costume and played some of the favorites of your Halloween. So Thriller and the theme to Ghostbusters and things like that. And so we, we allowed them to do it. It was free to the public and 800 people showed up. And we were shocked and they were very pleasant to work with. They had a great following. It was a fantastic, all the musicians. So when we talked to the organization about doing that again this year, they approached us and said, hey, we've kind of had to bounce around from different place to different place, but we're also looking for a home to do, produce three to four shows a year. And a lot of our musicians live in Ranch Mirage. They're from all over the world and all over back, you know, different types of backgrounds. So we've really tried to anchor our programming at the amphitheater with our musical theater. And so sometimes because of the rehearsals and the set building and a lot of those things, it's difficult to find where other programming would fit in. So in talking with our theater folks, partners, they said, oh, we're always looking for musicians for our orchestra pit. So when we talked to the symphony, they go, oh, my gosh, we would love to participate. And they said, oh, by the way, we have a, you know, a youth symphony that was started by the Buddy Rogers Foundation. So our, you know, our team just got together and we thought this looks like a great partnership with lots of synergies around it. So what you have before you is a proposal where they would do four programming, four programs for the year, free to, free to anybody who came. It would be marketed to our residents as well. And so what this basically does is finances about half of the, the fee of what their production would be on a normal year. Typically, they would, you know, they would get donors to sponsor half and then the other half would be, would be through ticket sales. So what this does is it allows it to be free. And then they can go out through other donors and other supporters of the symphony and finance the rest. But we'd be able to bring symphony to the, to the amphitheater and it times really well within and doesn't conflict with, with our musicals coming back too. So, and again, and then we'd explore, as this, as this staff report says, much like we've done with our youth theater, with our, with Desert Theatricals, we'll explore opportunities to bring some youth symphony to our library team, which currently doesn't exist at this moment. So that's, that's, all the specifics are in the, the staff report, but I'm available to answer any questions and go from there. So thank you.
Very good, Gabe. You know, two of the things that are very good is that it gives a free program to our list of free programs. And I sent you a couple of emails of people saying, how come we don't have more free programs for the residents? So this answers that question to a lot of people. It does a variety of wonderful things to bring this type of entertainment to Ranch Mirage free. And also we're not funding the whole thing. They do have money and skin in the game. So that's all good. So very good. I'm going to open this.
Question, Charlie?
I'm going to go to a public comment, then I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard. Chrissy?
Thank you. So now's the time. If anyone in the public would like to speak on this item, you can press star nine or raise hand if you're participating on Zoom. And I have no speaker cards and nobody online wishing to speak.
Very good. Richard, back to you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Sure.
Gabe, what exactly is the cost to the city for this program? I, I see money being donated to set.
So we would be the presenting sponsor. So it'd be the Coachella, Coachella Valley Symphony presented by the City of Ranch Mirage at the amphitheater in free and marketed free to our residents and our guests. So the budget that we're suggesting and proposing in the staff report would not exceed $50,000. It's typically, it costs them about $25,000 per show. By the time they turn on the lights and they rent the place and they, they do everything. So pay the musicians that come out. A lot of times if they bring in kind of a key personality, so their costs are right around or $25,000 per show. So basically we'd be sponsoring half of that to make it free for our residents.
Okay. And they'll go out and raise money to.
Correct. So, so a production like this would cost them about $100,000 to produce for, for a season. We're recommending we pick up half of that because half of that would be through ticket sales. So we said, if we sponsored half of it, could we make this production free? So that's how we're proposing it to provide more free, even free programming for something like this for our residents at the amphitheater.
When would this take place?
So the, the proposed schedules with your staff report, so the first one would be this October, where they do another Halloween themed one. The Halloween music's spooktacular. Then in January, they're proposing a best of the stage and screen. So you'd have everything from The Godfather and some of the famous scores from movies, from famous movies. Then in March, they would do a concerto. Or they'd also talk about maybe another movie themed one. And then they do another one in April where they'd have a key performance. We've talked about doing like a classic album. So like, and sometimes they'll bring in like, say, for example, we've thrown around like the Moody Blues or something like that where they've created an album that with the symphony, where they would bring in a guest performer and perform that album or do something. So they're looking at some unique ideas. None of this is set in stone. This is just kind of a draft proposal. But those dates have already been cleared with our theater. So it would run from October and then the last one would be in April.
Thank you.
Very good. And Gabe, also, this has been a proven program because it's been around. So it's nothing that's just starting up fresh. It's, it's a proven background and a history to it.
Yeah, the group that's organized, very passionate. They've, they've done a lot with it. And what really took us by surprise was we kind of did last Halloween, we thought, maybe a couple hundred people show up at this thing. That'd be great. I mean, it was, it was hot. It was standing room only and, and people loved it. And, and so that's really what caught our eye to thought this would be a great partner because it has a built-in audience already. And the musicians are very passionate about what they do.
Right, right. And as you know, I've been a huge proponent of our Ranch Mirage Amphitheater. And I was so grateful that during the pandemic, we were able to move our library programming there to the theater and continuing to offer safe outdoor options for cultural and entertainment. So I take great pride in seeing our cabaret and Broadway under the Stars series becoming so successful. I really like this idea of adding the Coachella Valley Symphony, the collaboration concept with our theater orchestra, a new symphony. All sounds very exciting. And I think this is something our residents would truly appreciate it. So that's my comments on it. So I'm open to city council comments. Ted?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think it's a, a great idea. And anytime that we can provide another amenity for our residents, it's, it's a great contribution. Gabe, when we have this program, do you anticipate that there will be food service?
Yeah. So much like we do at kind of our theater, this wouldn't be dinners, like dinner, like table service dinner, but the same concessions that we, we've done at our previous things. Yeah, they'll always be, they'll be full bar and there would be concessions available.
Oh, good. So somebody can come in, obviously buy what they want, have something to eat and drink and enjoy the music.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris?
Okay, just one question, Gabe. How many people can we accommodate in an evening with stadium type seating?
Yeah. So if you really wanted to push it, I mean, you know, what we've found. Yeah, so if you really wanted to push it, I mean, you know, what we found, the sweet spots between eight and 900 for pleasant, the lines for the restroom aren't incredibly long, concessions, the bar, you could, you could squeeze 1,000 to 1,100 in there, but the sweet spot's about 900 where everybody has a great experience. But we'll be prepared for, for either one. But we target, we try to target around eight, 900 as the max for stadium seating.
And do we already have any kind of lineup for the food concessions? Is that something that's still pending?
Yeah, we're working through that right now because obviously we didn't want to put the cart before the horse. We thought this was a good program, but now that we've, now, you know, now that it's looking favorable, once, if we do have the approval today is when we start working with this team on themed meals and meals appropriate and offerings appropriate with, with the program offering.
Well, I can't think of finer words to say than absolutely exemplary that we can do something like this again and offer this not only to our residents, but to the entire Coachella Valley. And all things considered, especially with the economy and, and teetering and the difficulties that people are having financially, you know, whatever we can do to make people's lives more enjoyable certainly is another feather in our cap and just a pleasure to know that we, as Rancher Mirage, you know, can do these things and pass on, you know, the pleasures that we can. So thank you again, and thank you for, to staff that has put all this together. And thank you, Charlie, for your initial bringing to us of Desert Theatricals.
You know what I call it? It's our Hollywood Bowl, guys. This is what it is.
And that's certainly what it's becoming.
Yes, yes. And there's a lot of good things and big surprises coming up from the future, which I will just tantalize you with, but I won't tell them, Gabe, anything about.
Yeah, you're on embargo.
There you go.
So I'd like to give a special just shout out to Haley Tyce, who is kind of the, the manager there. She's the one that brought this opportunity. And, you know, at first I went, ah, we're, we're trying to do so much. We moved all the library programming, but she's been very passionate and thought I'd like to give this a try. It's a great idea, and, and we've, we've talked symphony and, and the programming there being fitting with our, our demographic and, and our resident base and trying to create it unique. So when this happened, she's the one that really advocated for this and did a lot of the legwork. So I'd like to just thank her publicly for doing that.
Absolutely. You've got a good staff there. Always thinking out of the box, Gabe, is the main thing.
And just, Charlie, just one more comment. You know, when people comment through the years of Rancher Mirage having, you know, this, this pocketful of money and what came in handy, and we needed so much during the desperate times during the pandemic with our Great Plates Program, you know, this is just one more thing there we can offer to everyone where our, our savings benefit the entire Coachella Valley. And it's just joyous that we're able to do this.
Thank you, everybody, for the support. So Steve, do you have anything to say?
You know, the only comment, I don't have a question, the only comment I have Charlie's, this is a great idea. We've, we've got this terrific facility. We have the ability to fund this. The CV Symphony, I've been to some of their performances, they're great. We have this experience with them within the last, what, year or so where they certainly filled up the, filled up the amphitheater. So this is a remarkable thing for us to be able to do for the people of the City Rancher Mirage. Looks to me like we're probably going to vote for this.
I think so. I think so. All right, with that then, I think I will call for a motion. All right, nobody does it? You're giving me the honor of doing this, that the City Council authorize the city manager and director of marketing to enter into an agreement with the Coachella Valley Symphony for free performances for residents and guests at the Rancher Mirage Amphitheater in the amount of not to exceed $50,000.
I'll second.
Well, I have several seconds, and I really appreciate that. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Very good. Congratulations to all of us, to the City of Rancher Mirage, and to the residents of not only this City of Rancher Mirage, but you've got to say the Coachella Valley because that's where it draws from, the whole, the whole event. And there's many people who are trying to emulate us, but they're doing nothing like what we are doing or what we have planned for that amphitheater. So congratulations. With that, we are going to go into, if my script is correct, 11. There it is. Thank you. I knew I missed something. Consideration of Special Assistance Fund, and that's the SAF Awards. And we have Gloria Greco. Hi, Gloria.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Council for consideration are the Fiscal Year 2223 Special Assistance Funds Awards. In 1990, the City Council implemented the SAF program to award funds to qualified nonprofit organizations that provide special activities, programs, or services to the citizens of the community. Council has amended the guidelines from time to time as the need arises. On July 6th, a press release was issued notifying the public of the application process. This information was also placed on the city's website. The Fiscal Year 2223 SAF Subcommittee is recommending an award of funds to 17 qualified nonprofits for a total amount of $51,000. The city receives multiple funding requests throughout the year, and the Subcommittee will have the opportunity to recommend funding to other qualified nonprofits that submit requests during the fiscal year. The list of recommendations is attached. I will now turn it over to the Subcommittee for Comments.
As a member of the Subcommittee with Councilmember Smotrich, we went through the various applications for grants. There are many worthy causes. We looked at all of these. What we look for is those that generally pertain and contribute to members of the Rancher Mirage community whenever possible, and of course, take into consideration of the needs of the particular charity. And so I think that we have chosen a variety here of those nonprofits in need that contribute to our community. And it's just a pleasure and gratifying, again, another example of a city that recognizes a, a need and an obligation to fulfill their responsibilities, and that's what we've done here. And so it's my pleasure to be part of that committee and to make this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And it is indeed my pleasure to be a part of this and have been for the entire time I've been on the council. And, you know, we take our fiscal responsibility very seriously, and we spend money very carefully in our city, as everyone knows. But when it's times like this that we can contribute to these different organizations and make life easier, especially for people with disabilities or people with diseases, you know, it, it just shows how, how much all these funds play a part in, in the betterment of all these lives. And it, we are so fortunate that we can do this. This is just one more opportunity and fine example of our fiscal responsibility and how it plays into so many different people's lives. So I thank not only Gloria for doing all her research, and she does, answers lots and lots of questions and, because we always have questions, and also contributing with Kofi's help to making these decisions. So we're very fortunate, and I thank you so much. It's a joy to be on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. You know, I was just thinking, along with that, the food program that we did for those two years, the resurfacing and the landscaping, the money that we put back into the community and that we give is, is a wonderful thing. We should all really be proud of that. Very, very proud of it. And that's just a few that I mentioned. There's more. All right, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Thank you. So now's the time, if members of the public would like to speak on this item, push star nine or raise hand if you're on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards. Give me a moment. And no one on Zoom would like to speak.
Very good. And council comments? Anybody? I think we've covered it. Then I will call for a motion.
And I'll make that motion that the City Council approved the awarding of Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Special Assistance Funds to all the organizations that were listed.
I'll second that.
We have. Motion carries five zero.
Very, very good. With that, we are going to go into closed session. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to our illustrious city attorney for summation.
Where's the app?
That's you.
The council at this point is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to government code section 549, suing rental owners and neighbors of Rancher Mirage et al. versus City of Rancher Mirage, vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancher Mirage versus City of Rancher Mirage, the Hometown Colony LLC doing businesses, the Colony Mobile Home Park versus City of Rancher Mirage. And the last case, we do not specify the name since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. So those are the items for closed session.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. And with that, we will go into closed session, and we will resume after. All right, it is five after four, and we are reconvening our open session and the meeting of closed session announcements. And I'm turning this over to the city attorney, Mr. Steve Denea.
Mr. Mayor, the City Council took no reportable action in closed session.
Very good. Thank you. So this will end the, excuse me, Thursday, September 15th, City Council Meeting of Rancher Mirage.